Regular meeting at Goodyear City Council, 12 June 2006. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation led by Councilmember Susan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then for the invocation. Heavenly Father, this council prays for guidance as we conduct the business of this city and for the benefit of its residents. We pray for the men and women who perform their daily functions that make this city a safe and excellent place to live. We pray and keep in our hearts the military who serve in distant and dangerous lands, and especially for those who have given their lives so that others may enjoy the freedom as we know it. We ask, "Call us in your name," we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All councilmembers are in attendance today. Minutes, we have the draft minutes of a regular meeting held on Main 22. Any changes, comments? Seeing done, the minutes are approved for filing. We have no expenditures to ratify. We are now in Communications, and we do have a presentation, recognition of service and dedication of Millennium High School Law and Public Safety Program, and that's led by Karen Latin from Awafreea High School. Ms. Latin?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Karen Latin, Director of Career and Technical Education for the Awafreea High School District. And with me this evening is Dr. Leslie Standifer, Assistant Principal at Millennium High School. And we're here this evening to present an award to Dr. Peter Gutierrez, a Goodyear Officer Gutierrez was very instrumental in launching this new program, the Law and Public Safety Program, at Millennium High School. He has committed many extra hours of work to ensure the success of this program. Officer Gutierrez's daily contact with students through the classes and related activities has helped to establish a new relationship with the students at Millennium High School. And aside from the serious stuff, if you stand in the hallway and watch him walk down the hall and watch the kids go by, he greets them by name, gives them high five, it's really nice. So, Officer Gutierrez, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a plaque here that says, "Presented to Officer Pete Gutierrez in recognition of your service and dedication to the Millennium High School Law and Public Safety Program 2005-2006," and it has a picture of him with his class.
Nice.
Gutierrez, would you just stand there? Why don't we walk around and shake his hand?
Oh, yeah. Do this.
Kato, she can move up there if she wants to take a photo.
Let me add one quick thing. This is an elective class, so students vote with their feet. They don't have to take this class. They're there because of this relationship.
Thank you.
Peter.
Good seeing you again. Yes, good seeing you too. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Good seeing you.
Peter, you have your back to the camera.
Is anyone on council, is there anyone on council in the public who would like to make a presentation or commendation for anyone? Okay, I'd like to move now to Communications B, which is, do we have any current reports, current events from our council that they would like to report on? Councilmember Lord?
While you were away, I had the pleasure of having Southwest Ambulance present us with $5,000 for the Pool Pack Program. And it's a very good program. Having been a swimming instructor in my past life, I know how important it is that our young children learn how to swim at an early age. That's probably a better deterrent and even a fence if we get them all swimming at an early age. Spoke with Rotary Club on City Center, and people are most excited in the area for that to get started. I have been attending Litchfield Corridor Task Force also. And of course, all of us, I'm sure you're going to speak, other people, other councilmembers. We attended the Police and Fire Awards Program, and it just makes one proud that we have such great people working for both of those departments in our city. And then lastly, it's a pleasurable thing, I went to, was invited to a Phoenix Mercury game, and they introduced us at the third quarter, and Goodyear's name was up on the marquee. And a number, yes, how about that? And a number of people came up and actually talked to me about Goodyear and said they've been reading all the good things and exciting things that have happened. They mentioned the ballpark, they mentioned the university, they mentioned I-10. So it was really good, and it was a great game, and those girls really fight hard.
Any other reports? Vice Mayor?
Yes, I just wanted to compliment both Fire Chief and the Police Chief, the combined awards program the other night. I was honored to speak at that banquet and that presentation. It was just so very well done. Every award that came up just sent a chill down my back. So proud of our Police and Fire. And Mark, and Mark, you did a great job. Thanks so very much. It's very proud to have Police and Fire people that we have in our city that are so unselfish and give so much. So I think we're very lucky, very fortunate to have this group of people in our midst. And I thank you very much for the services that you've performed for us over the years.
Thank you. Okay, just one comment. We're very pleased as a council to have in our midst today an ex-councilperson. Ken Porter? Ken is a veteran of 12 years on council, so Ken, you're always welcome, and we still respect you as much as we always did.
I notice he still wears the City of Goodyear shirt.
Yeah.
City Manager?
Not at this time, sir.
Okay, thank you. Move to the Consent Agenda, part of our meeting. I'm going to ask that the clerk would read the consent items by title only, please.
Item 8A. Council will receive and file the following recommendations from the Citizens Personnel Committee concerning the City of Goodyear's elected officials' compensation and benefits. One, a city charter amendment placed on the March 2007 ballot requiring the Citizens Personnel Committee be formed every two years to review the compensation and benefits of our public officials. Two, public officials will not participate in the elected official retirement program. Three, the mayor, vice mayor, councilmembers of their dependents should be allowed to participate in the city's health, life, dental, medical, flex spending account and vision plans at the same contribution rate as full-time employees should they elect to do so. Four, the city should provide an increase of $2,000 to the base pay of the mayor, vice mayor, and councilmembers. Implementation of the compensation increases should follow the current city charter provision. The $2,000 increase would be effective after the 2007 city elections for the newly elected officials. Item B, council will consider adopting Resolution 2006-1045 declaring a certain public utility easement to be unnecessary for public purposes and vacating a certain public utility easement. Item C, council will consider accepting the dedication of right-of-way and public utility easement for a portion of Van Buren Street generally located along the north of right-of-way line between Litchfield Road and Bullard Avenue. Item D, council will consider approving a motion for the City of Goodyear to authorize payment to Discovery West Ranches for the following of agricultural land which will immediately provide additional water supplies to the city. Item E, council will consider authorizing an accelerated payment schedule for the city contribution agreement with West Valley Arts Council as follows: a $100,000 payment in June 2006 and a second $100,000 payment in December 2006. Item F, council will consider approving the final plan for Centerra Track D subdividing approximately 45 acres into 254 single-family outport home lots and 44 tracks, newly located on Yuma Road between Estrada Parkway and Bullard Avenue in the Centerra Planned Area Development subject to stipulations. Item G, council will consider approving funding levels for community services as specially meant sponsorship requests based upon the recommendation of the council subsidy and the presentations at the May 15 Council Work Session, and authorize city manager to enter into the contract with Thunderbird Balloon and Air Classic LLC for title sponsorship of Thunderbird Balloon and Air Spectacular. Item H, council will consider adopting Ordinance Number 06-1004 amending Article 2, Article 3, and Article 4 of the zoning ordinance of the City of Goodyear, Arizona, adopted in May 24, 1999, as amended, to define body piercing studio, massage establishment, and tattoo studio to allow for massage establishments, tattoo studios, and body piercing studios to be located in the C2 zoning district, subject to additional staff review requirements and separation requirements to allow for tattoo studios and body piercing studios to be located in the I-1 zoning district and the I-2 zoning district, subject to additional staff review requirements and separation requirements, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Item I, council will consider approving the updated nonutility and utility five-year capital improvement plan fiscal year '06, '06 through 2010, as modified during preceding West Work Session. Item J, council will consider adopting Resolution 06-1046 authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Phoenix to provide federal funding for the Goodyear Park and Ride Facility, providing for an effective date. Item K, council will consider approving approximately $6,400 fiscal year 2006-2007 for a total of $19,196 over a three-year period for participation in Maricopa County Human Services Campus Capital Campaign.
Hey, thank you. Would anyone in the public wish to remove an item from the Consent Agenda? Would anyone on council wish to remove an item from the Consent Agenda? Okay, I'd like to, if I could remove one, H, Adopting Ordinance for Requirements for Tattoo, Massage, and Body Piercing Establishments. We could remove that one, and we'll discuss that separately. Okay, then, ask for a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 8A, B, C, D, E, F, G, I, J, K.
So, 8H?
I have a motion from Councilmember Susan, a second from Councilmember Antoniak. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Seven zero.
Okay, thank you. On H, for the public, that's Adopt Ordinance 06-1004 for Requirements for Tattoo, Massage, and Body Piercing Establishments. I did inform the city manager I would be pulling that today. And Harvey, are you going to respond?
I have the presentation, but...
My question is really strictly one. It seems to me like this is a candidate for special use permit. And I guess if it isn't, then I need to know, what is your authority to deny this requirement in a C2?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, we looked at this particular provision. One, we do not have regulations that address these uses, and most of the cities we looked at had separation requirements, much like we did with payday loans, we had separation requirements, so much distance from a residential area, so much distance from an adult business. What we are focusing on is the land use, not the operational aspects of what goes on in a massage, tattoo, body piercing facility. So the use permit is, it's not a license. It deals with allowing a use in an area that, so we don't congregate these uses in one particular neighborhood and one strip center, much like we do with payday loans. And that is the basic criteria where we would approve or deny a use of this particular matter. In terms of the council, additional review, what other land use considerations would the council use to evaluate a use and say yes or no to a use? That was where we, as we were focusing on this, it's the exterior of the use, and its impact to the neighborhood and surrounding uses, not so much what goes on inside the use.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
How far apart are the loan businesses? How far?
Thirteen twenty, I think.
Right. So, you went to a thousand on this one, right? Or 1,100,000?
That's correct.
Why would, why would be in the same as the loan?
Mayor, Councilmember Lord, we did the, really, the payday loan really doesn't have any, I guess, for a better word, constitutional rights. These uses have some constitutional rights. We looked at some of the studies that were done, some of the other cities, and pretty much a thousand feet is what was recommended based upon the studies and the research and what the city attorney's office said, that probably the maximum we should probably go.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I certainly agree that massage parlors and tattoo and body piercing establishments are fine in I-1, and they're, I guess they're acceptable in C2, I'm not going to argue that. But my point, if we, if they satisfy the separation, and in most cases they would, and they wanted to put one of these establishments at the city center or at the mall, do you have the authority to say no to that? Or do you need us to have a special use permit requirement to say no to that? Because I don't think we want that in those areas.
Mayor?
At least I'm speaking for myself. But anyway, I guess, if you have the authority, you feel confident that you can say no to one of these requests in a C2 because of the specific location, city center, mall, regional mall type thing?
Mayor, councilmembers, once again, the C2 district is the key, and we don't envision that the city center would be zoned C2, so there wouldn't be, it would be a specific plan overlay. We're specifying specific uses, and those uses wouldn't be allowed in the city center. In regards to the other C2 areas of the city, if the property is zoned C2, hard zone, what we call hard zone C2, and there are no other requirements, yes, it could be allowed if it met the separation requirements.
So the city center will be an overlay zone, a mixed use? But this is a C2 use, really. So, Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, I think the mayor's onto something here, Harvey. And, you know, up until recently, everybody had applied for various types of liquor permits. We reviewed all of these, and now we have a shortcut to it, but we did review them. And here's a real potential health hazard with these parlors. If they have an epidemic or a sign to them with regard to hepatitis, for example, contaminated needles, this is all recorded at Department of Health Service level. Do we look at any of that before we give them a permit to proceed with this business? And if not, we sure as heck ought to.
Mayor, Councilman Scott, what the code talks about is licensed versus unlicensed. So if it's licensed and in good standing with the state, then they would receive, met the separation requirements, yes, they would get approval.
Okay, but the city should have something to say here. They may have a license, and they may have three or four cases of hepatitis B that have been traced to that facility, and they still have a license. Maybe we don't want that business in our community. You have a right to turn them down, but we're not going to do that if we don't know anything about it.
Mayor, council, it's council prerogative if you want to review these uses and through a use permit. Half the cities that we surveyed did it through a use permit, the other half did it administratively. If the council would like to do that, that's fine.
Well, I'm not sure the council wants to do it. I would like to know that staff is bringing it before us with a clean applicant, clean application.
They aren't going to bring it for you under the ordinance. It won't come to you.
I know, modify it so that we know.
What happens if there's a business license? What if we have, what if we have that department for that?
City Manager, you wanted to talk. Stephen?
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think the discussion leads us as staff to suggest that you continue this matter and give staff an opportunity to go back and look at this a little more closely and bring you a couple of options.
That's a good idea.
That's good to me.
Okay, anybody disagree with that?
It's good.
Okay, fine, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Scott, for your comment.
Catch, Mayor.
Hurry.
Good catch.
I wish we could eliminate him. End of motion.
Motion to continue would be appropriate.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to continue item 8H to a future meeting, the 26th of June?
The 2nd.
Is that correct?
Very specific.
Right, you need a date for that.
July, or July 10?
July 10.
July 10.
Okay.
July 10.
Yeah, I'll move that we table item 8H until July 10.
My second.
So, a motion from Councilmember Antoniak, a second from Councilmember Scott. All those in favor, sticking up your hands, stating aye.
Aye.
Both, the ayes have it seven zero. Okay, well now move to the business part of our agenda, and Harvey, I guess you're up again, or? How do you want us to handle A through D, E? D, you want all at once?
Yeah.
That'd be great. Councilmembers, as the mayor indicated, all four, the next four items, all deal with the same properties, so we'll talk about that together.
And just that I should summarize that we're talking about a pre-annexation development agreement with a company, and then an annexation of 80 acres, and a rezoning, and a preliminary plat.
Yes, thank you. Mayor, council, members of the public, the pre-annexation agreement deals with two properties, basically non-contiguous properties, that are being submitted by Mariah Development Company. This parcel of property, which is 40 acres, and then there's 80 acres. The properties, this is Yuma Road, this is 181st Avenue Alignment, this is 183rd Avenue Alignment, and this is the Durango, get a pointer, maybe I'll work better. This is the Durango Alignment, Durango Road Alignment. The pre-annexation agreement involves both properties, and commitments are with both properties. However, the zoning, the subsequent annexation, zoning, and plat only deal with Paseo Ridge, Phase 1. These two particular properties have had a couple of names, Mariah 1 and Mariah 2, but I think they've settled on Paseo Ridge, Phase 1, and this is Paseo Ridge, Phase 2, just so there's consistency there. As the council recalls, in May of last year, a memorandum of understanding was signed with 16 property owners in this West Goodyear area, primarily between Cotton Lane and Perryville north of MC85 and south of I-10, to reach an understanding on the provision of infrastructure, water, sewer, fire services to this area, provided for a minimum density of 2.85 dwelling units in exchange for the financial contributions that are being provided to these particular properties. So the development agreement that's before you mirrors exactly the memorandum of understanding that the council has seen previously with some other properties. Just for reference purposes, Pradera has been annexed in the city, as well as Los Ventanas. La Privada is in the process of being annexed. It'll be on your agenda for your next meeting in June for action on annexation. So this particular property will be bounded by the city. Both properties will be bounded by three sides, as well as being within the city's strip annexed area. These are county properties that are not being annexed at this time. So the next item on your agenda is the actual ordinance to annex Paseo Ridge, Phase 1, not Phase 2. A subsequent item after this, there'll be a public hearing just to consider Paseo Ridge 2, the public hearing. So this is kind of running behind a little bit of Paseo 1. So with that, Mayor, that concludes my comments, and then I believe Rick will talk about the zoning issues and the plat issues.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just going to take your attention back to a vicinity map here for just a moment, and again point out that Paseo Ridge is two properties. This is the North 40, sir, and this will be the South 80 down here, the Durango Street Alignment, the Yuma Road Alignment, sir, as well as Perryville Road coming through here. This will be La Privada, which y'all will see in the subsequent meeting, and Los Ventanas right here. Together, sir, they roughly equal 123 acres, and the applicant has requested R16 zoning this evening. The general plan, you can see right there, it conforms to the general plan as stated. Mr. Prowse indicated that the applicant is a member of the participating member of the MOU, which provides for a base density of 2.85. And with Phase 1 and Phase 2, sir, they're asking for a 2.93 dwelling units per acre. Phase 1, sir, as we had indicated, I'll just back that up just a little bit. Phase 1 is the 80 acres to the south. And they're proposing 214 lots on 80.35 gross acres. They're providing two different lot sizes, sir, with the smallest being 7,200 square foot, and their largest lot size being 8,400. They're proposing 19.07 acres of open space, which roughly equates to about 24 percent for this Phase 1 area. The Phase 1 area, sir, would be, total would be about 2.76 acres per dwelling unit. Now, they're also offering several amenities to go along with their open space. They're proposing a multi-use regional trail, three mini-parks located in these areas right here. They also have a shared green belt, which, this would be the western border of it right there with the Los Ventanas Development to the east, I'm sorry, to the west. They're providing shaded Ramadas along with barbecue areas. And while we're talking about that multi-use trail, I just wanted to kind of bring this to you, because this is, it's been a while since y'all have seen this. The multi-use equestrian trail, sir, is, if y'all recall, with the Amber Meadows Development, there was a drainage channel that kind of came right off the RID and ran through, circled around. And I just would like to indicate the area which that runs, and this is it coming out of Amber Meadows, swinging through the La Privada Development, comes all the way down the eastern edge of the Paseo Ridge Development, swinging around to the west, and then Pradera picks it up in the northwest corner and takes it all the way down into the Las Rices Development, sir. We held a citizen review meeting on February 23, 2006. We had a nice turnout for that meeting that evening, and several of the adjoining neighborhood, neighboring owners participated in that meeting. We took this to PNZ on May 17. We took this to P&amp;Z on May 17, 2006, and they recommended unanimously that they pass this on with approval. Staff is recommending approval of ordinance 2006-1007, sir, with the 55 stipulations that y'all have before you this evening. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. I believe the applicant is here as well.
Did you, have you satisfied with the plat?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Opportunity for the applicant, present.
Mayor and council, Dustin Jones with Snell and Wilmer, on behalf of the applicant, Mariah Development, the developer of Paseo Ridge, Phase 1. This project actually comes to you after much delay. My client purchased the property about a year and a half ago, and approached me with the desire to fast-track this project into development at the City of Goodyear, annex the piece from the county into the City of Goodyear, zone it and plat it, and get the ball rolling. Shortly after acquiring the property and a few meetings with the city, realized that there was a sewer capacity issue in the City of Goodyear, and therefore there would be a bit of a delay. And so, over the course of many months, worked with staff, engineering, and various departments to work with the other developers in the area to provide a sewer solution for the city. As staff has indicated, this project is one of those that had a memorandum of understanding that was executed last May with some very specific requirements on behalf of the developers, as well as the city, to work together to provide for a solution. And to date, my client has already contributed about $800,000, if it's per share, to the projects outlined within the memorandum of understanding. As staff has clearly indicated, the project is being processed into two phases, the Phase 1 to the south and the Phase 2 to the north. The original idea was not to have these in two phases, but because of some delays with the annexation applications, we had to bifurcate the application and have the north side be Phase 2. But from our perspective, we've always seen the project as one entire project. As staff has indicated, in Phase 1, Phase 1 is approximately 80 acres of property, 214 units. The average lot sizes in the Phase 1 on the south side of Yuma are 60 and 70-foot wide lots, and 7,200 square feet is the minimum lot size in that, or the average lot size in that area. The density in this southern portion of the project, Phase 1, is quite a bit higher than in the north. The primary reason being is that large drainage channel that runs along the eastern side of the project, as you've seen in the application. To the east of this project is a county property, and there are a number of family members that live in that, in that development. I can't remember the name of the family. Castillo, they came to the neighborhood meeting we had back in February, curious to know what was going to be happening in the property right next door. They'd been there for a number of years, and many of the children have purchased parcels and have subdivided and created their own little family, family neighborhood there. So, they were concerned, they wanted to know how this was going to impact them, and were quite pleased to know of the buffer that we're providing there, that was obviously created by the need for a drainage channel, but that drainage channel is going to be landscaped and will provide a large buffer, so that the homes that are facing west aren't looking out at a block wall, which would be the perimeter of someone's backyard, but there's a deep separation between the two. Phase 2, which will be coming before you shortly as well, is the piece on the north side of Yuma, which is about 43 acres, 136 units on that site, and also has a density, open space of 18% of the site, particularly because of the drainage constraints, drainage issues, because of the RID to the north. So, all of it flows south, and it has to be collected somewhere, and working with engineering, we need to provide that onsite collection and retention and de-chen of the water. So, you can see there on the, this proposed landscape plan, on the very bottom piece, I don't know if there's a mouse or something on here that works, a pointer, but is there a pointer on this?
There is.
There it is. Is there another electronic pointer?
No. Point it off.
I'm done, I'm just disappeared. Put it on Elmo.
This is a PowerPoint that's up there, so. I just wanted to point to the bottom there. It looks like it's frozen. There it is. Perfect, thanks, Eddie. On the very bottom here, this is the drainage channel I was speaking of, that buffers the properties to our east, and this is about 90, 90 feet, 100 feet of open space that's a buffer here. This is the perimeter wall that will go around the property. It goes behind the homes, not that far north, but right on the backsides of the homes, comes around here, and then goes up to Yuma, and then it's right along the backside. So, this is all open on the outside here. There is actually a residence in the county, the Castillo family, that is about in this location, right on the very bottom of the screen here, but there's a home that one of the family members is building that will be looking right out at that, that open space on our side. Some of the amenities that staff has already noted that will be provided on the site, the entry monuments, sharing access with the property to our west, which is another home builder that's building there. As you come in, coming south off of Yuma, there's a shared access there, off of Yuma at 183rd Avenue. The property owners in this development have come together, because these are all separate pieces, not part of a major master plan community, the property owners came together and wanted to create sort of an entry monument. And so, at the very center where you see these properties coming together at Yuma, right here in this area here, all of the developers, this developer to the north of us, this developer to the west of us, and these two pieces in Paseo Ridge, have decided to come together and create an entry monument feature that brings the projects together, because again, there are four different corners, four different, or three different owners, but try to create something that ties the properties together in that, in that area. The families, obviously to the, to the east of this site, are pleased with the buffer, but also pleased with the ability to be able to use the trail system themselves. It's a multi-use trail system that the city's been encouraging in this area, the western part of Goodyear, and will be open. The project is consistent with the general plan. The MOU that was adopted, approved by the city council last May, provided for a minimum of 2.85 density for this area. That is a floor, that was the minimum, 2.85. That being addressed the general plan. The general plan says you get 2 to 4, and as anyone that worked on the general plan, 2 is the minimum, and then the developer would need to provide amenities within the development to get anything higher than 2. With the MOU, that was modified to allow 2.85 to be the floor, and then anything above that was through amenities. This project, because of the substantial amount of open space, 24%, as opposed to the city's standard of 15, would warrant the little above that, from 2.85 to 2.96 in our, in our estimation. Again, the lot sizes are consistent with the city's standards of 60s and 70s. I've already spoken to the open space, and appreciate your time. This is a, again, this is a straight, hard zone case. This is not a PAD. The city has a very comprehensive zoning ordinance, and the standards are very, very established in the ordinance. One of the questions that P&amp;Z had was why a PAD wasn't proposed on the site, and the developer decided, well, the standards that the city had adopted in their R-16 were adequate, and simply just took the cookbook, the rules off the shelf for the R-16 district, and has zoned the project in accordance with the city's standards, and has not asked for any modifications to the city's adopted standards. I don't understand any questions at this time.
Thank you. Stand by, Dustin, and we may have some for you. Okay, again, we're talking about 9A, B, C, and D. Do we have any comments from the public, questions? Okay, seeing none, this council will handle each of these individually, so ask the clerk if she'd read resolution on 9A, please.
Resolution 06-1043, approving a pre-annexation development agreement with Mariah Development LLC, an Arizona limited liability company, regarding the annexation and infrastructure development of 120.52 acres generally located at the southeast and northeast corners of 183rd Avenue and Yuma Road within the City of Goodyear, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion?
Motion to accept resolution 2006-1043 as read by the clerk.
Motion from Councilmember Scott, second from Councilmember Holland. It's open for discussion, the pre-annexation. Okay, I just have a question again. I mentioned this to Stephen, and I think you said Rourke was checking it, or was it Harvey?
Harvey.
Yeah, on the second page of the COAC, it's in the pre-annexation. It's actually applicable to more than, other than that, but it's, or more than that, correctly. It says, "The city is agreeing to commit to a minimum density of 2.85 dwelling units per acre." And I certainly remember 2.8, and, but I don't remember saying that was, is that, did we agree that that would be the minimum across the board? Is that in writing?
Mayor, councilmembers? Yes, that's part of the MOU, as well as the development agreement. What it was for, the 2.2 units to an acre is the base floor for the general plan, and before the developers, the 16 property owners invested considerable amounts of money in infrastructure. They wanted, it didn't pencil out for them at 2 units to an acre, they had to have at least 2.85 units to an acre. So, that set the base at 2.85. So, yes, that's in writing.
Okay. Okay, then, any other comments? Okay, ask for roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cavalier.
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa.
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Lord.
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Aye.
7-0.
Okay, we'll now move to B, and that's for annexation of 80 acres south of Yuma, north of Durango, and see, Paseo Ridge, Phase 1. And could the clerk read the ordinance by title only, please?
Ordinance 06-1009, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Goodyear, Maricopa County, Arizona, pursuant to the provisions of Title 9, Chapter 4, Article 7, Arizona revised statutes, and amendments thereto, by annexing 80.35 acres of land known as Paseo Ridge, Phase 1, generally located south of Yuma Road, north of Durango Street Alignment, west of 181st Avenue Alignment, and east of 183rd Avenue Alignment, and providing a city zoning designation of agricultural urban.
Could I have a motion?
Motion to accept ordinance 2006-1009 as read by the clerk.
Second. Motion from Councilmember Scott, and a second from Vice Mayor Cavalier. Open for discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Lord.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier.
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa.
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Aye.
7-0.
It will move to C, adopting the ordinance to rezone the 80 acres. Ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only, please.
Ordinance 06-1007, providing for conditional rezoning of 80.35 acres of property from the agricultural urban zoning district to the R-16 single-family residential zoning district for residential development known as Paseo Ridge, Phase 1, located at the southeast corner of Yuma Road and the 183rd Avenue Alignment. Amending supplementary zoning map 06-011 to provide for the change in zoning, providing severer separability, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
I didn't understand that, Mayor.
We accept ordinance number 06-1007 as read by the clerk.
Second. Motion from Vice Mayor Cavalier, second from Councilmember Scott. Open for discussion. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I have some issues with this. And taking a look at the plat on both phases of this, either one, now this is a...
This is a rezone, though.
This is, no, this is the preliminary.
No, that's, this plat's next.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If your question is on the plat, that's next.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If it's on the zoning?
No, it's on the plat.
Okay.
I thought we were, I'm sorry.
Okay, well then we'll hold on that.
Yeah, let me hold back on this one.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, further discussion on the rezone. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lord.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier.
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa.
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Aye.
7-0.
Okay, now we're at the preliminary plat for Paseo Ridge, Phase 1. Again, that's Phase 1 only, southeast corner of Yuma Road and 183rd Avenue. We have had the presentations by both the staff and the applicant. I'd ask for a motion to approve the plat. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve preliminary plat for Paseo Ridge, Phase 1, southeast corner of Yuma Road and 183rd Avenue.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Antoniak, and a second from Councilmember Lord, Vice Mayor Cavalier.
Yes, I am not enthralled with the plat on this, because it's not, there is nothing creative about it, there's nothing that shows us any design or any thought put in this, except a bunch of houses put together like army barracks. All the open spaces around these, outside with a couple of parks in the center. In the past, we have looked at, well, first let me say this, we're trying to upgrade, and we said we're going to continue to raise the bar on our design standards and on the way these properties are going to look, and yet something comes to us like this. Now, I can recall way back when, we had a problem with a property that was way up north, and it was like this to begin with. And what we wanted was curvilinear sidewalks, and we wanted some kind of design in the open space that broke the property up. But this is nothing. You've got straight sidewalks across linear, just straight linear blocks of properties, and I can't go for this, because if we're going to raise the bar, and we want this to be a quality city, and we're trying to get, someone to come in here to bring us quality upgraded businesses, they're going to look at this and say, well, this is just another... in fact, this is not sustainable. This is simply not sustainable. And it's not because it does not give the people who are going to own these homes enough room to do anything. And several things are wrong with it, other than that. The fact that, okay, it's small properties, these are, what do you call it, court homes, that's fine, it has nothing to do with it. The fact that there's no restrictions on the parking, for instance, there is a slight restriction, but not enough. The garages could be used for storage, and all the cars to be parked out in front of the garage. In small court homes like this, that's almost guaranteed. I've seen it over and over, unless there are restrictions that say you have to park your car in the garage, we know we can park on the street, that's, that's a given. But the mere fact that you just park on the driveway, and leave your car there, and use your garage for storage, and that's what's going to happen, because these are smaller homes. And they don't, we're not addressing any of these issues. This will end up a slum if we don't do something about it. So, I, I will have to vote against this, unless we can do something to have the builder come back and show us, or the architect come back and show us something that's a little more creative, with a, with a design in the neighborhood between the houses, or at least down the streets, where it isn't just straight sidewalks, but we do have landscaping in sidewalks, and the sidewalks are a little more curvilinear, and it gives us a little more creative design. In the nicer areas of Goodyear, you will see this, and I want this to continue here. All the property, all the, the parcels around this, this one, have not come into the preliminary plat yet. And because they haven't, now's our opportunity to stop here and say, let's make them do this one that way, and then the other properties coming in, we can ask for them, in the same manner, to do the same things. Let's make this thing a better quality, let's raise the bar in our design. That's all I have to say.
Okay, before we continue, one of the items on our consent agenda was court homes. That's what you're thinking of.
Yeah, these are court...
This is a single-family detached.
Okay, these are single-family, it's still the same thing.
Okay, just clarify that for the record.
Okay.
Which actually adds to your argument, frankly.
Is why?
It adds to your argument, because court homes, you would expect greater density.
Yeah.
Okay.
Still, this is not, because of that, some of those things, yes, okay, whatever, I said it.
No, it's, it's good, thank you. Glad to hear it, really. Okay, Councilmember Antoniak, did you raise your hand?
In befuddlement, because I'm sitting here looking at a commitment that we've made previously at 2.85 acres, or 2.85 dwelling units per acre through an MOU, and by no means it's three to the acre, a court home product, or even approaching a court home product.
No, I, I got that mixed up with the other...
So, I, I guess I kind of threw my hands up... So I guess I kind of threw my hands up in the air in befuddlement. I mean, the things they are doing, I think they're respecting the surrounding community. They're adding a great green belt throughout the community. There is curvilinearness within the tight framework they're working within.
Mm-hmm.
I've seen many more products coming in front of us that have more homes in a row on a straight street with, you know, less breaking up of those homes with green, some attributes going to the, to the east into that green belt. They're working with all the surrounding property owners on making it thematic and, you know, all the things that we've challenged people to do when we're talking about small development and, or smaller developments in our community. So I'm a little confused. I don't share, I guess, bottom line, I don't share what was expressed earlier, and need to state that and vote in favor on the way forward.
Okay. Councilmember Lord.
I'd like to echo, also, Mayor Antoniak's sentiments on this. If you look at this chart, this one right here, Frank, have you looked at that one right here?
That's what I'm looking at.
If you look at the streets, there's some curves, and there's some, definitely, I look at some home sites in there that I could see would be very palatable to the public. I agree, it's a small area, but I think they've done a relatively good job in spacing the green area, and I particularly like this, lots of the outlining green area around. And I think for the size of the community, I think they've done a good job. I'll be looking forward to see the type of homes they've set out in that design.
Right, okay, Councilmember Holland.
I think back to Councilman Cavalier's comments, some of the things that he mentioned really would belong in a homeowner association type of environment.
We'll get there.
Talking about the cars and that type of thing. So I understand his concerns, but I think that those types of things really belong to the homeowners association that will occur in this area.
Councilmember Scott.
I have an appreciation for what Councilmember Cavalier said, but I, as an individual, I have no problem with this. I have one more response to everyone else.
Absolutely.
I just feel that something more could be done in the way of quality, because it's going to, the way, the quality of life is the issue here. We're building these homes for these people to come in and have a good quality of life. Then we turn around and we turn to our economic development people and say, we want you to bring in these expensive upgraded businesses, because this is what Goodyear deserves. Well, if we're not going to upgrade this into anything more than you see in the other cities around us, and that's what you see here, nothing more than what you find in the cities around us, then that's what we deserve. We won't get the big expensive department stores, we're going to get just what we deserve. And that's the reason I'm going to vote against it, and I still hold that this is not the quality that it should be, and it is not sustainable, and I rest in case.
Councilmember Sousa.
A question to council. What are the sizes of the homes that are going to be placed on these lots? Can you give us an idea on what the value might be?
Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilwoman Sousa, at this time, we don't have a designated builder, but these are 60 and 70-foot wide lots. And if you go throughout the city and you look at the prices of the homes that are already under construction right now, today's market, on 60s and 70-foot lines, these are homes that are in the high 200s and low 3s. These are, by no estimation, cheap homes, and we can ask probably many of the employees of the city if it's a cheap home or not. I would argue that that's hitting pretty expensive for a lot of people, and that's at today's market rate. So if we were to go out another year and a half, two years, when these homes would come online, it would be probably even higher. I would say they'd probably be in the low 3s.
Well, I think that...
And the sizes, and the sizes, just to answer your question, apologies, would be 1,800 to 3,000 square foot range homes.
I can't think that kind of answers the concern of...
I think that kind of answers the concern about quality in construction here and the type of homes that are going to be going into this area. It is, it's a very tight area that we're dealing with here. Is it 218 homes or...
214.
Pretty respected area from a standpoint of acreage, so I think it's...
Mayor and council, if I could interject, I'm doing a lot of zoning in this city and do a lot of work in the Southwest Valley, and I served on the city's Planning and Zoning Commission. Gone are the days where you're going to have cheap homes being built in Goodyear. The prices that Goodyear demands because of the quality that the city requires, it sets the bar very, very high. If you look at the stipulations, this is 54 stipulations on this case that require four-sided architecture, require all kinds of design review for a home builder to be able to build in the city. And I will tell you, because I've sat in these meetings, the staff holds the developers to the standard the city requires, and there are different standards that other cities require. I would tell you, if this case was being approved in the city of Phoenix, there would be three stipulations. Goodyear sets its standards very high and clearly articulates them and enumerates them in their stipulations.
Okay. Okay, I just want to make a comment that I really support the concept which you're referring to, Vice Mayor. I have been concerned over the last couple of months about the quality of product in the West Goodyear area. We're coming in at about 2.8, but there's so much similarity in the lots that it concerns me. In fact, the lack of dissimilarity in the product is worrisome to me. So I, actually, I'd love to join you in a no vote, but I'm not going to. But I can assure you that when you come in at 3.25, you'll get a no, you'll get a couple no's there, so, and that's in Phase Two. But I think he's followed our minimum standards, and I just wish that the people who develop in West Goodyear would start to raise that standard. So, any further comments? Yes, preliminary plat, all those in favor of the motion to approve, signified stating aye.
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
The ayes have it, six to one. Okay, we'll now move to a public hearing on that Phase Two. Open the public hearing.
Mayor, council, this is a public hearing for Phase Two of Paseo Ridge, which is approximately 40 acres. It is, lies within the city's strip annex area, which is along 10-foot, along Perryville Road. It abuts the city on, by Los Ventanas, and as I indicated, La Pravada is proposed for annexation, will be considered by the council later this month. This, the blanket petition and map have been filed by the city clerk's office at the county, and that initiates the annexation process. And within 30 days, we're required to hold a public hearing, and no action should be or can be taken after the public hearing. The purpose of this is just to solicit comments from adjacent property owners. The property's been posted in three different areas, and notices have been mailed out to property owners. And so with that, that concludes my comments. So, Mayor, can you open the public hearing and take comments?
Okay, thank you. Opportunity for public comment, public hearing, public comment. Yes, sir.
On the Phase Two there, I'm the...
Could you introduce yourself?
I'm Mike Tregaboff. I live at 18502 West Yuma Road. I'm on the, on that Phase Two thing right there. I'm the little guy right in that little corner there. I'm the one lone, other than, I guess they're surrounded pretty much by developers. Other than my cousin Fred, Tregaboff has, he's not here tonight. Do you know Fred? You're laughing, you must.
I know the name. Tomochov and Tregaboff, right? You've been on land here for 100 years, I think.
Yes, yeah, I've lived in that lot there for 26 years. I think it's real great that they went over and contacted all the castillos, which are neighbors ours, I've known for a long time. Nobody ever contacted me about what they're doing. I agree with the Vice Mayor. When I look at his army barracks surrounding me, I have, I know I'm not going to stop this development. I mean, I know it's coming, it's going to, they're going to come in around me. But it would have been nice if we just had something a little more like the Vice Mayor recommended on. Questions that I have are, are they going to, you know, stack two-story homes up against me? You know, what size homes are they? Two-story, are they single level? I don't think they know that yet, maybe. If we're going to, if they're going to crowd them in the way they do, and they're going to leave it up to some homeowner association, well, I've seen how that's worked out real good out in Sundance and places like that, and you see cars up on jacks, and my son, daughter-in-law just moved out of there for that reason. Associations won't do anything about it. And so when they're crowded in that tight and they're stacked in, well, if you're going to leave it up to the association, I think you're going nowhere. But my concerns are, you know, that what are they going to do around me? Are they going to, how bad, how much fence are they going to put around me? Are they going to stack two-story homes up against me? And, you know, those kind of concerns, because right now, nobody's buying me out, so, they made an offer too, so, I'm stuck there, and that's, like I say, so I'm interested in what's going to happen on Phase Two.
Okay, thank you. Did the applicant and the staff get the comments? Okay? Any other comments from the public? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you. We'll now move to freeway pylon signs. And Joe Schmitz.
Mayor and council members, good evening. We've been discussing this issue for the last several months, particularly as there's been a growing number of requests for freeway pylon signs, particularly along the I-10 corridor in the vicinity of the planned Ostraya Falls Mall Regional Shopping Center. The first request that was reviewed in this area was for the Goodyear Center Point development at the southeast corner of Ostraya Parkway and McDowell Road in November of 2005, and the council reviewed freeway pylon sign in connection with that development and approved the freeway pylon sign, but raised some questions about the city's policy involving freeway pylon signs and how future requests might be reviewed. A work session was then held in January of this year to discuss the city's policy, and it was the consensus of the council at that time that an ordinance amendment should be pursued to make it clear that a freeway pylon sign was not allowed by right, but should be a discretionary act by the council based on the quality, appearance, and need for the proposed sign. During the time the ordinance is being drafted, another pylon sign came in for the At Home District. Likewise, that freeway pylon sign was approved. And then, the ordinance did get drafted and has gone through the review process. The proposed ordinance would separate freeway pylon sign regulations from the sign section of the zoning ordinance, make it part of the special use permit section, provide additional flexibility, the definition of the freeway pylon sign was changed to simply state that it could be erected on property that is adjacent to the freeway. But there were design guidelines that were included in the ordinance that would be adopted with the ordinance that would give direction to applicants as to what would be reviewed during the course of a proposal for a freeway pylon sign. And the design standards address such things as the size of the property, again, 30-acre minimum, amount of freeway frontage was increased to 1,000 feet, setback from the freeway and the maximum height of the proposed sign. However, the council would not be bound by these regulations and could approve them where extraordinary conditions existed, or unique characteristics, or architectural style, or special design features were included in the proposal. The ordinance was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission at its meeting on April 19th, and the commission recommended approval of the ordinance by a vote of six to one, with Commissioner Lux voting against the motion, indicating that he prefer not to see any of the freeway pylon signs at all. The ordinance was modified slightly in response to comments that were received from shopping center developers, primarily for clarification purposes, and a provision was added whereby the changes that would be adopted could be applied to ordinance, to signs that were previously approved but not yet constructed, and namely, that would be the At Home District and Center Point signs. Lastly, the proposed ordinance hopefully gives the council the flexibility that the council desired in terms of reviewing the characteristics of the sign, the design, the quality, all of the things that the council was interested in terms of promoting in the community, and it would be a discretionary act and not allowed by right. The use permit procedure would require publication of notice and notification of adjourning property owners. That is something that is currently not in the current code. With that overdue provided, that concludes my remarks, and I would stand for any questions the council may have on this subject.
Okay, thank you, Judge. Stand by. Okay, do we have any comments or questions from the public on this subject, freeway pylon signs? Seeing none, ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only, please.
Ordinance 06-1008, amending Article Four and Article Seven of the zoning ordinance of the city of Goodyear, Arizona, adopted May 24, 1999, as amended by amending the definition of freeway pylon signs, establishing a requirement for the approval of a use permit for all freeway pylon signs, providing design guidelines for freeway pylon signs, prescribing the review process and evaluation criteria to ensure consistency with the stated purpose and intent for freeway pylon signs, providing separability and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion?
Motion to accept ordinance 2006-1008, as read by the clerk.
Second. Motion from Councilmember Scott and a second from Vice Mayor Cavalier. It's open for discussion. We'll start with Councilmember Sousa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm appreciative of the staff's effort to attempt to reduce the number of proposed pylon signs that will clutter our section of Interstate 10 or our front yard. Reducing the number of potential pylon signs from 28 to 22 does absolutely nothing to discourage me from my original statement several months ago, that too much is too much is too much. If council agrees to 22 signs, even this number will lend a Las Vegas atmosphere of glitz and glow along the Goodyear portion of Interstate 10. At the present time, some of our residents complain about light reflections from our parks and little ball fields. What will their reaction be to the reflections of 22 or more flashing signs affecting our desert skyline? I'm not buying into the developers' contention that signs of this nature enhance business and sales opportunities. Pylon signs are not prevalent at the Arrowhead Mall. Parking lots are full of autos, and people are shopping because they are drawn there by newspaper ads and TV commercials, not glaring highway signs. Several members of the city council made tours of the Chandler Mall and the Kirland Commons Mall. Signs of this nature were not really discernible. Why then do we have to erect them in Goodyear? Some safety factors also arise. We have rightly been concerned about the number of deaths Goodyear has experienced along I-10. Will these signs be a distraction to the national travelers that use the interstate as they go across country? Will they provide distraction and danger to our community motorists who go to and from work? These are questions that should be considered as we ponder the good and bad of this ordinance. I firmly believe that pylon signs do nothing to enhance the stature of Goodyear. They only create an eyesore that we and others will have to live with into the future if this ordinance is passed at its present form. I will be voting nay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Anything comments? No comments? Councilmember Holland?
Just one comment to kind of follow up on what Councilwoman Sousa was saying. I know when I have traveled through our country... know when I have traveled through our country, and I'm ready to stop for the night, or I wanna stop at a restaurant, or I need to pick up something, I have depended on the signs out on the highway to tell me when to get off and where to stop, and just generally take my family to have dinner somewhere. So I guess I'm kind of, you know, looking at the positive side of this from a traveler's point of view when they pass through our city. And they will need some help. They don't know where to go. So I will be voting yes on this.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Antoniak?
I was just gonna say, it makes it very clear that it's still our discretion. So, I mean, it's, to me, it's, it's still within our purview to say yea or nay each and every time that a sign comes up for, for approval. So that's the latitude that I want. That's the latitude that the public wants is to be able to say, yes, it's appropriate in one instance, or no, it's not in another. I'll be supporting it. Okay. Councilmember Lord?
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Antoniak on this. And somehow, I just, I just can't imagine asking a business to come into Goodyear, and a good business, one we've been striving to get, and then we say, we want you, your quality, you're the best, but, ah, you can't put up a sign. So that part bothers me. I, I agree. I think that this covers it, and it does give us the latitude, gives us some, will be able to give some direction for the type of signs. And I think because of this ordinance, we'll, we'll get a more quality sign.
Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, I think I have the support, the, the support that's gonna already stated here. I, I think it would be unfair to, to tell our businesses in the community that they couldn't advertise in the way of pylon signs. And even though it'd look better without them, they serve a necessary purpose. So I'll support it.
Take further discussion? Seeing none, ask for Roll Call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Nay.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Six, one.
Okay, we'll now move to the special use permit for a bar cocktail lounge, and Katie Cobal will present.
Mayor Kavanaugh, Vice Mayor Cavalier, members of the council. Lounge Ten proposes to locate in the Parkway Village Commercial Center, located on the southwest corner of Roosevelt Street and Estrella Parkway. To the north is the existing Walmart Center. To the east is proposed residential use. Directly south is the Canyon Trails Two Commercial Center. South of that is the Safeway Center Commercial Area. And to the west is proposed residential land use. Lounge Ten proposes to locate on Lot Four, a Parkway Village which is located in the northwest section of the development on Roosevelt Street. Lounge Ten is required to obtain a special use permit because they will have a live music component within five hundred feet of a residential land use. They will occupy the eastern portion of this building on Lot Four, which is approximately three hundred and sixty feet east of the proposed residential land use. On the east side of the building, they propose to have an outdoor patio that is approximately four hundred and ten feet away from the proposed residential land use. The music component will be jazz bands, blues, acoustic performances, and music of that type of nature. The outdoor patio will also have speakers that will play pre-recorded music that's similar to any restaurant that's currently in Goodyear that plays music on their outdoor patios. Lot Four does have an approved site plan and elevation. Site plan is before you right here, and this is the elevation that's in conformance with the Parkway Village design guidelines. Lounge Ten will be in this portion with the outdoor patio on the east side of the building there. The applicant did submit a noise study with the application. They state that the decibel level within Lounge Ten is expected to remain below eighty-five decibels. To compare, the noise level in a typical noisy restaurant is approximately seventy-five decibels. The interior design of Lounge Ten will use drapes and curtains to help minimize the noise level. Most sound will be contained within the building. Directly outside of the establishment, noise will be approximately forty to fifty decibels. And to compare, typical residential white noise is about forty decibels. By the time it travels the three hundred and sixty-foot distance to the residential land use, and there will also be a six-foot block wall along this border between the residential and commercial land uses, the noise level is expected to be minimal. The speakers on the patio will be approximately seventy decibels. By the time the noise travels the four hundred and ten feet distance, the level will drop to forty decibels, and the block wall will minimize that noise level even further. On Lots One, Two, Three, and Four, there are twenty-two available parking spaces. However, the zoning ordinance requires that Lounge Ten have fifty-seven spaces. The Community Development Director did approve a parking agreement between the office building uses to the south. They will be approximately high time use from eight to five Monday through Friday, while Lounge Ten's primary use will be on nights on Friday and Saturday evenings. So they will be using thirty-five spaces in the office area for their business. Lounge Ten is estimating their food, food sales to be approximately thirty percent of their overall business. This would put them in the category of a bar. And if they have a separate ventilation, ventilation system from the rest of the building, they would be permitted to be a smoking establishment according to our smoking ordinance. However, the applicant has agreed to stipulate the establishment as a non-smoking establishment except for the outdoor patio area. An alternative citizen review notification was sent out to property owners within five hundred feet of the proposed establishment, and notice was published in the West Valley View on April eighteenth, two thousand and six. We did receive one response from a Goodyear resident, Tom Levinenski of seventeen-six-nine-seven West Manso, and he stated that Goodyear really needs entertainment on the west side, and that he supports this type of activity and urges you to allow this type of business. No other responses have been received. A public hearing was held on May eleventh, two thousand and six. One member of the community was present and was concerned, concerned with the circulation of the project. He was from the residential area to the west of the Walmart development. However, when staff explained that the most traffic will come out to this light on Roosevelt and Estrella Parkway, and wouldn't really need to go through the residential area to come back on Roosevelt, he was satisfied with that response and supportive of the project. Planning and zoning recommended approval with a vote of six to zero with one member absent. This concludes my presentation. The applicant is available for questions as well as myself.
Okay, thank you very much. Would the applicant like to present?
Yes.
Evening, Mayor.
Evening.
City Council. I have a brief presentation I put together because we wanted to show what Lounge Ten is all about, and discuss a little bit of details, and offer to Goodyear. You'll have to bear with me on the presentation. I guess there were some issues setting it up, but I'll go over the outline briefly here. What is Lounge Ten? Our philosophy, objectives, our theme, a little bit on our projections, sales by amenity. We'll cover some of the strengths. Going to Parkway Village, which is a prime location for us. Katie already touched on the parking and noise studies. Show you a few of the menu items, staffing, labor, and our organizational structure and experience. What is Lounge Ten? Well, it's an establishment that's gonna offer unique decor with a relaxed environment and a romantic environment. We broke down the type of business we're gonna be offering here. It's primarily a dining, drinking place, and limited service restaurant. We also will have the option to cater out. City of Goodyear obviously offers a strategic location to provide such an entertainment package for social interaction between the upscale and mid, mid to upscale professionals, seasonal tourists, and sporting enthusiasts, and foremost, the local community at large. Well, we have a philosophy. Relaxation to us is key. So we'd like to provide an exceptional service that leaves a positive impression to our customers. Our lounging romantic atmosphere of this establishment will consist of components with a unique dining experience, live entertainment nights, dance nights, and just lounging to an international flavor of music unlike any in the valley, all while enjoying quality libations as you were in the comfort of your own living room. We have some objectives. We'd like to capitalize on that excellent location. We'd like to make sure we're set, we set a high standard here in Goodyear by being the first ones in to provide such an establishment. We want to focus on a highly publicized grand opening. We're actually looking at a three-stage grand opening, one being the local government and services, such as police and fire department, second would be local businesses and alliances, such as hospitals, local corporations, and finally, get the local community and general public grand opening. Our objective is obviously to maintain tight control of our costs. That will be to maintain our food costs to below thirty-three percent, beverages below twenty-five. Some of the items we will utilize to maintain that will is a liquor pour management system, excuse the typo there, called Scanabar, real-time management of liquor distribution and pouring for consistent product. And one of the things that we believe in is to start tipping the scale for entertainment from the east valley to the west valley. Some of the keys to our success will be a service level that provides a positive impression, consistency in product quality and atmosphere. Secure, that'll be, the foundation behind that will be security and surveillance so our customers can feel comfortable in our establishment. We'll, we'll be using a unique innovative point-of-sale system utilizing wireless PDA for order-taking, for speedy service. And our management, sorry, management of internal financial and cash flows to enable upward capital growth, of course. And again, strict control on our costs with no exception. So what are Lounge, some Lounge Ten's themes? So one of the things we'd like to offer here, because the ten implies a sense of perfection, I think I-10 proximity had a little bit to do with that as well, and that decision. But we'll offer the top, top choices of brewed beers, mixed drinks, spirits, and wines from around the world, distinct choices of cuisine from our lounge bar and dessert menus, display of local artistic talents. We'd like to utilize the local artists to display and even sell their art pieces at our establishment, a wide variety of musical, excuse me, see, this is what I was referring to, a wide variety of musical packages, dance nights utilizing Lounge Ten's high-quality sound system, live band nights, as discussed, for local jazz and the local jazz and music, music circuits, acoustic piano nights. We'd like to provide happy hour specials, offer private parties as well. We'll have flat panel displays for seasonal sporting packages. We'll also supply free Wi-Fi wireless internet for business meetings. That'll be a secure system, and a custom bar, bar with contemporary decor. Some of the projections we've ran suggest net profits over two-point-two million in the first year. A breakdown by the amenities suggests that, on average, we'll be selling about sixty-three percent liquor, twenty-plus percent on food sales. There may be admission for bands on particular nights of the week, and others will be things such as novelty items, T-shirts, I feel we have some strengths coming into Goodyear. Being the first here in the west valley allows us to set a high standard. We, we know that based on studies, the traffic in Goodyear, a lot of is, is, is from outside the city of Goodyear. We'll provide a powerful menu by our chef, Lee Prince. Fortunately, he couldn't make it this evening. We'll, we'll have an innovative and efficiency of operations, like I mentioned before, using Scanabar system for consistency of liquor pour, point-of-sale incorporating the wireless PDA and surveillance system for a security, full-time surveillance. We'll have geographically influenced competitive pricing. So unlike Scottsdale or the east valley, we can be competitive in this side of the valley, providing competitive pricing on our products. Our management team is a diverse, has a diverse background. We're international, we're an international team. We are professional and open with our stakeholders. That includes the city, police, and community. And of course, we want to focus on improving the well-being of our employees, clientele, and the community at large. This is Shops D. Katie discussed the east side of the building, a conceptual layout of the square footage breakdown on that of our establishment. As discussed, the parking study performed by task engineering concluded there's enough parking for the lounge to accommodate the expected maximum parking accumulation. And the parking, and our, sorry, our noise study suggests that all noise will dissipate below the threshold of suburban city street background noise by the time it reaches the residential. This may be a little bit difficult to see. We took some items out of our menu. The top four are basically from our appetizer and bar menu. The next four items are just samples of our salads, and at the bottom are sandwiches that we plan to offer. You're making us hungry. I'll speed it up. Lounge Ten Labor Forecasts. Wanted to present typical staffing on a slow night, for example, on a Monday versus a Friday night, where we show our security staff, the amount of bartenders, hostesses, overall staff, and at the bottom, breakdown of our annual expense for labor, being in the three-hundred-thousand range.
What's the average hours, I mean? Average hours per week?
That would be average hours per day. That's total for the amount of personnel in that category. We made some assumptions as to how many hours those individuals will be working to get a good, a good approximation on our labor costs.
So the bartender, bartender, seventeen hours?
They're all seventeen.
No, but it's only one bartender.
Five by three. One, four.
Bartender? It's one.
One, I assume you mean one on duty for a total of seventeen hours. That may mean it's two people working. It could be two people. We have the full weeks projections, Monday through, through Sunday, so, can't quite see there. So for the one bartender, for example, on Monday... So for the one bartender, for example, on Monday, if we were open from four, three or four in the afternoon, seventeen hours would be excessive, so that may be an overestimate in that day, whereas on other days, um, we make up for that difference.
You're really working, working these employees seventeen hours a day?
No, this would be divided by the amount of, um, quantity of the people being there. That's that second, uh, column.
This is deceiving.
It's dece- it's one. It's, it's a little deceiving, yes.
It would be, it would be easier to look at if it was expressed in FTEs.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just impressed you're giving us this level of detail.
It's probably more than required. I kind of wanted you to see the, uh, the, 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 um, amount of labor costs that we would be providing to the local employees here on an annual basis. Uh, just a little bit on our, uh, current, currently, we have four shareholders. Uh, there's the organizational chart. We incorporated in two thousand and three with, um, with the objective to open up a, an establishment like this in Goodyear. Originally, we focused on existing locations, and, uh, we appreciate the letter from Mayor Kavanaugh, uh, a couple years back, suggesting Estrella Parkway would be the prime location for such an establishment, so.
You're on my hook.
We're here now.
He's got a good memory.
We waited this long, and, uh, we'd like to, uh, move forward at this thing. So this, this breakdown, um, Wilson Womani, our CEO, he's basically our financier. I described him at a, on the next slide, myself being, um, Vice President of Operations, and Lee Prince, our chef and general manager, uh, basically op, running the operation. Tony Tambila on the right for the financial, uh, sector. Just a little bit about Chef Lee. He's, uh, educated in culinary arts. He brings a lot of experience to Lounge Ten, over ten years in the restaurant and bar industry. He has started up Alice Cooperstown in downtown, Basis Restaurant. He's been general manager for three different locations, uh, including The Barbecue Company, Alice Cooperstown, and Basis. Lee, Lee brings to us this special menu and his expertise in managing, uh, such an establishment. Myself, um, I'm originally from Poland. Currently, I'm a process engineer at ST Microelectronics in Phoenix. I also have some background in the food industry. I used to manage McDonald's for a couple years. And I am very motivated at this point to, uh, to bring such an establishment to the city of Goodyear. Uh, we have Tony Tambila. He's, uh, originally from Togo, Africa. He's a master's in business from ASU. Tony is, uh, the man behind the numbers, so currently, he's also an industrial engineer for ST Microelectronics, and he will ensure that the financial objectives are met. And again, CEO, Dr. Wilson Womani, originally from Kenya, he, uh, he's providing the backing for the project. And that's all I have at this time.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You forgot to tell us whether the salmon was poached or grilled.
Fortunately, he's not here, so, um...
Okay, do we have any, uh, do we have any comments, questions from the public? Okay, thank you very much. Sir, if you could just hang around, we have some questions for you. Could I have a motion, please, to approve the special use permit?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve special use permits to allow Lounge Ten, thirty-five-hundred square foot bar cocktail lounge with live entertainment component and general commercial C-two district generally located on the southwest corner of Estrella Parkway and Roosevelt Street and Parkway Village Commercial Center.
Second.
I have a motion, Councilmember Antoniak, and a second from Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Antoniak?
I, I don't know how you can say no. I mean, I remember looking at an idea not of similar size, but when Councilmember Porter was here, in a different location, in a different part of the city, uh, with a different character here, and, uh, I think we just got with somebody of character business, and obviously, you've written him a letter, so. Whether that's to be corroborated or not, but...
Are you writing red or anything?
But in all honesty, sir, Robert, you, great presentation. Fantastic. I mean, I think, uh, many people that do present in front of us can take a lesson from you, and, uh, you, you definitely gave us a lot of detail, a lot more detail than what was required, but you recognized, uh, the importance of that detail as you came in as a new establishment, a one-of-a-kind establishment for us in Goodyear. But I wish you all the success, and, uh, frankly, envious of your position and, uh, jealous of you getting to do what exactly you want to do every single day, so best of luck.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you very much for your presentation. I've worked on a business plan similar to this, and, uh, you almost covered it in more detail than, uh, my business plan, but, uh, it's very good. Now, I have one question, or a couple of questions, but the concern I have is, is this really going to be a, a lounge where you're going to play jazz and you're going to play good music, or is this going to be a thing that you try this, and the piano on the off nights, and then later on, that doesn't work, and we're going to go back to guitars and cowboys and eighty-five? The eighty-five festivals is not, to me, doesn't sound like romantic soft music for, uh, lounging, and I'm concerned about that, especially with the hotel being adjacent to it, uh, your outside situation there, and the fact that you are going to put in no smoking. I think you ought to continue that no smoking out to the outside lounge too, because you'd be surprised in Goodyear, no-smoking areas do better than the smoking areas. And, uh, some of the lounges that have, that are bars that don't have to go into no-smoking have trouble keeping their clientele, where the ones who've opened with no-smoking, for instance, the native New Yorker, which is just a sports bar, place is packed every night. And it's a good place to go because it's, it's, you don't have the smell of smoke, and it's, uh, a lot of people go there because of that. You'd be surprised at people in Goodyear that don't smoke. Anyway, just that as a, uh, suggestion. And I'd like to know, uh, do you have a store, uh, do you have a lounge ten? Is there another bar somewhere in Scottsdale or in the area that, uh, you got experience in?
Uh, no, there isn't at this time. Uh, we have, uh, Tony Tambila, who has been a partner in an existing location called Scorch Bar in Desert Ridge. Not sure if anyone's familiar with that location. At this point, we are not operating anything. We are entrepreneurs. We want to get started from the ground level, bring something in to the city that's going to satisfy you and, uh, the public in general.
Because my, my thinking was, when I read this, I said, here's a cowboy bar, and this is what we don't need in Goodyear. And, uh, I know you're not going to play Mozart, but on the other side of it, you know, it's, if you're going to play nice cool jazz and, and, uh, you're going to do some very upscale things, and upscale type restaurant, I, I think, be a good place for it in Goodyear. I'm just concerned about how loud it would be outside, especially with the hotel right next door to you.
Well, we, we, we found that, uh, all the noise from the inside will be contained as much as possible.
I don't think inside's a problem.
Right.
It's out on that patio.
The outdoor patio, um, what we did, some speaker studies, typical, uh, restaurant speaker level is about seventy, seventy-five decibels. What we found is over that distance to the hotel, it's, it'll dissipate to an acceptable level.
Because there are speakers that...
Right.
Drop.
So we can see them being elevated above, similar to something like this, pointing down at the clientele on the patio.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Souza.
Yeah. Robert, when you were showing your, your slides, you indicated that, or even the answer to the Vice Mayor's question, you stated that there wasn't any other entities that you had been involved in, and I noticed that there was a referring to, referring to the owner or the, or the CEO. Sexy ten, sexy ten, what is that?
So one of, some of the items on the menu, the way, uh, Lee Prince, our, our chef, has portrayed some of the names are, for example, Tequila Kissed Chipotle Shrimp. So he likes to emphasize the romantic, sexy side of the menu.
Okay, so you weren't referring to any, any type of, any type of other establishment that he was involved in, that...
This is a brand...
Maybe you started out this way, and then you came down to that level. That's one thing I, I don't want to see.
Sorry for the, you're not going to vote no now, are you?
I might.
Okay. Councilmember Scott?
Yes. Mr. Bytrowski, I think that was a really nice presentation, and, uh, welcome to Goodyear as far as I'm concerned. When do you think this will be up and going if it's approved?
Uh, currently, we're working with the Landlord Brothers Equity Group, the third in Parkway Village. Um, I believe their, um, building construction should begin sometime this summer, late summer?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we're probably looking early next year, two thousand and seven.
And one other question, and I want an honest answer to this, is, does the mayor have a vested interest in this project?
No, we have not spoken. But he writes letters.
He does write letters.
Nice letters.
Okay, do we have any comments or questions? Councilmember Dolores?
Thank you for the nice presentation, and it's very encouraging that we're getting some unique type of entertainment, and it's, it's really needed in Goodyear, and there's a group of people that have been talking about that for a long time. And the other thing that opens up, because it is not a chain, it's something creative and private, um, you know, just down the street, we're going to be building the city center, and we're certainly looking for some very unique elegant restaurants to come in there. We have one of the top chefs working in yours, and perhaps if this is a success, he'll walk down the street and open up a very nice, unique restaurant for us. Thank you.
Councilmember Souza?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have some of the concerns that the Vice Mayor had about decibel levels, and I'm sure that if they are beyond acceptance by the neighborhood, that you would react immediately upon complaint.
Definitely.
Yes, I can see that you have that type of, uh, background. You would be, I'd be able to.
We want to keep everybody happy, so they can continue to return. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just one last question, Katie, if I could. Could you put that flat map, and can you say, tell us who some of those users are in that area yet, or, like, where's the hotel? I think I know, but I'm not sure. Yeah.
These are shops buildings that are surrounding to the north and east, and we don't have specific users for those yet.
But those are what, the, uh, office?
Retail buildings.
Retail, retail, okay.
Um, in this, um, northeast corner is where the Starbucks and bank drive-through that council approved the use permit for, and there will be additional retail on that corner. Sherwin-Williams is located, um, down here in the south portion with, with more re, small retail shops. These are two office buildings. Um, this one has been approved, and the other office building hasn't come in yet. And, um, then Lot fourteen is a retention basin, so that will not be occupied. And then the, um, Comfort Suites Hotel is located right here. It's approximately four hundred feet away from the proposed Lounge Ten.
And is this a six? What, what's there? Is that a six?
Six, yeah.
Building six.
That's retail.
Okay.
That's unknown yet.
Unknown. It's possible.
Thank you.
Could I ask another question? Do we have, and this is for our attorney, do you have a shared liability here with regard to using office space, uh, for parking with a bar? If there's, if there's an accident there because somebody's been drinking too much, et cetera, et cetera? Is that something we ought to be involved in, or is that just between the office space and the, and the owner of the bar?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I would believe that would be between the, the owner of the bar if they have a, a cross-parking arrangement. There are some drab shop liabilities, uh, in case law, that if you over-serve a patron and they, uh, get in an accident or cause damage, that the, the bar owner, serving an obviously intoxicated person, could be held liable, but I think our liability would probably be limited in that circumstance, just from a land use perspective.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, stick your hand up by standing right, please. Foes? Guys have a seven-zero, welcome to Goodyear. Hey. I think the next one's going to be a long one. Can we take time now? You think it's going to be longer? I don't know. I make the assumption. No? Okay.
Oh, this is a...
Okay, well, let's, let's give it a shot. All right. Count mine. Okay, and, uh, we'll now move to the resolution adopting the tentative budget. Larry Lang, Larry, how long are you going to be up there?
I have, uh, a total of ten slides. I will try to keep a brief, probably fifteen minutes.
Yeah. Great. I already called that one.
I've already called that one.[308.02]
Six dash ten forty-four, adopting tentative budget. Larry Lang will present.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I will try to make my comments brief. Tonight, the resolution before you is the first step in the formal process of adopting the budget for the City of Goodyear. The term tentative budget is a term out of the Arizona revised statutes that is the first adoption step that the city council takes. You adopt the tentative budget followed by a final budget. The tentative budget is the, sets the spending cap on the budget for the year. It also generally is what most of us would consider the final budget, but we will bring that back to you. Tonight, I'm going to review first the budget timetable, what we've done so far and what steps are ahead. I want to show you the changes that we've made to the budget since the original budget proposal that we presented to you, do a brief budget summary and discuss the expenditure limitation, and then I'll turn it over to questions that you might have. The formal budget process with the city council started on April seventeenth where we reviewed the budget policies. April twenty-fourth, we presented the city council with the proposed budget for the 2006, 2007 fiscal year. May fifteenth, we had a follow-up meeting reviewing that budget in more depth. Tonight, June twelfth, we will, we're asking the city council to adopt the tentative budget. June twenty-sixth is scheduled for a public hearing on the budget and the truth in taxation. June twenty-sixth also is scheduled for council adopting the final budget. July tenth would be the date for the city council to adopt the property tax levy. All of these scheduled dates are to coordinate with state law to make sure it is compliant. You do indeed adopt the final budget before you adopt the property tax levy in Arizona state law. In September, several members of the city council asked that we review the budget at that time because of the changes in the state's shared revenues being higher than what the estimates that we've originally prepared. So with that, I will start with the changes in the budget proposal from what we submitted in April. The budget submitted in April reflected total budgeted expenditures of three hundred and ninety-five, or three hundred and ninety-six million dollars. At our May fifteenth meeting, we provided a list of proposed changes to that budget of various items that had been missed within the budget or questions that had come up. Included in that was a three hundred thousand dollar item to increase your sales tax reimbursements to comply with agreements, as an example. Also later, on April twenty-sixth, after the original, I believe it was, the Public Arts Program was presented to the city council and you asked that we included funding for a full-time position. So those are included in that million dollars. I can go through that more extensively if you would like. In addition, in the CIP that you approved earlier in the council meeting and had a work session earlier this evening, there were about seventy-eight million dollars in adjustments from what was estimated. Most of these adjustments were funded either by projects were not completed, that we did not expect to be completed as of June thirtieth of this year, or through additional developer contributions that several of our staff people anticipated coming in. If those developer contributions do not come in, obviously those projects wouldn't be able to go forward. As we discussed in May fifteenth, the estimates for state shared revenues are very conservative. We have not received final estimates until the special census by MAG has been completed. Made a calculation to indicate that the maximum I could expect to see that increase to be is five million dollars over what is included in today's budget. That with the three million dollar increase in state shared revenues that we're already showing would be a hundred and thirty percent increase in the state's shared revenues from last year to this year, if indeed it went that high. Realistic numbers on that would probably be an additional two or three million dollars, but we included a higher amount to give you flexibility. City council discussed funding of that at a later date, so we've included this in the budget as a single line item that can only be spent on approval of this group and obviously subject to the revenues coming in. So there are no specific expenditures tied to that money today. Very brief summary of the four hundred and eighty million dollar budget that is included in there. Seventy-two million dollars or fifteen percent of the total budget is for operating expenditures. A hundred and sixty-five million dollars or thirty-four percent represents the capital improvement plan that was included earlier this evening. Two hundred million dollars represents bond and loan-funded projects. What this consists of is a seventy-five million dollar budget appropriation for the proposed stadium project should that happen. That would be financing through the Arizona Stadium Association if that did happen. An additional seventy-five million dollar budget appropriation for proposed west core, what we refer to as a west core improvement district for road improvements surrounding the proposed west core mall. An additional forty million dollars that we included for possible assessment districts that might be formed throughout the year. There are a couple of areas within the community that for infrastructure improvements discussion has been made that there might be assessment districts, and we included forty million dollars just to allow that to happen. Under Arizona law, if you do not appropriate for money, you cannot spend it regardless of how much you collect. So from the expenditure side, we like to include appropriations that may not happen. It gives you the authority should that money come in. Fifteen million dollars is appropriated for, call it contingency fund to comply with our charter, but it's the reserve money that is set aside. Five million dollars is the amount that I discussed earlier that includes the state shared revenue increase that's shown as one slice in this pie to itself. The remaining twenty-three million dollars consists of funded depreciation, of one-time capital expenditures, replacement equipment, and debt service funded by the secondary property tax. Because the budget does reflect expenditures that are required and represents the most that can be spent, there are certain items I like to back out of the budget to reduce the budget to what I call a practical budget, which is basically intended to be something that is more practical to get your hands around as to what does the City of Goodyear really spend. And so with that, we've pulled out the placeholder for possible activities. That's the three large bond issues that I just discussed for the stadium financing, but they total a hundred and ninety million dollars. In addition, there are developer contributions of sixty-four million dollars that are included as part of the capital improvements plan. That sixty-four million dollars could, for some reasons we'll discuss in a few minutes, could very well be done in infrastructure or improvements as opposed to in revenue that would affect our budget. So we show that as a separate item. And finally, about sixty-nine million dollars in items that have been budgeted previously, generally referred to as carryovers. These are items that were included in your two thousand five, two thousand six budget, but in Arizona law, you must re-budget those items. The budgets do lapse at the end of the year. Many of you familiar with areas on the East Coast know that those do not lapse if you actually have purchase orders encumbrance and you just budget new money. But in Arizona, you are required to adopt that a second time. So that leaves us with a practical budget then of a hundred and fifty-eight million dollars. And the breakdown of that would be about forty-five percent for operating expenditures, twenty-one percent for your capital improvements, an additional six percent for bonding. The contingency reserve then would be at ten percent. And then the other projects that I described earlier would total twenty-three million or fifteen percent. A few highlights, if you will, from the operating budget perspective. The operating budget is increasing in this budget from fifty-seven point nine million in the oh-five-oh-six budget to seventy-two point two million, which is approximately a twenty-four point five percent increase from a year ago. As you'll recall, as we reviewed the revenues, the operating revenues are the sole source of the operating expenditures. We are removing the capital expenditures from the operations, and that has taken place. This operating budget includes sixty-one new positions. There were four hundred and ten positions approved in the two thousand five, two thousand six budget. In March, the city council approved an additional fifteen positions as a transition and to allow the recruitment to proceed before July first. And then this budget also contemplates forty-six additional positions, and these are the positions that were presented to you in the budget book. This also includes personnel cost increases that were summarized in the executive summary on page one of the executive summary. Couple of items I wanted to point out in the budget as you're looking and as you would make comparisons to prior years. First of all, in comparisons to prior years, smaller departments, impacts of specific transactions can have a significant impact when you do a percentage increase from one year to next. For example, when this budget was put together was prior to your receiving recommendations from the salary committee, which were actually officially received tonight. You received them in a work session a couple of meetings ago. And so this budget included an allowance of seventy-five thousand dollars for salary increases and health benefits, and that has not changed because the city council has not acted on that issue at all. By adopting this budget, you still haven't acted on that, but that funding is available for you to be able to do that. In doing that, the city council, operating budget only, looks like it increases by about twenty-four percent just for that one line item. In addition, the city prosecutor is adding some help in the middle of the year to keep up with caseloads, and that represents a forty percent increase in that budget because it's a very small department currently with one attorney and an assistant working in it. We also have a few items, if you compare, that are changes in accounting presentation. In the city manager's budget, last year it was presented as three different departments. One was called administrative services. One was called the city manager. One was called the deputy city manager. Those three positions added up to one million six hundred and fifty-seven thousand. The current proposed budget shows all three of those as one line item referred to as city manager, which adds up to one million eight hundred and eighty-six thousand. So while the increase just in city manager by itself would look like it is going from four hundred and eighty thousand to one point nine million dollars, the actual increase is only a thirteen point eight percent increase when we put them on comparative line items. Any questions of that nature that may arise, I'll be happy to answer as we go through Without doing the complete exercise, again, taking a look at our revenue sources to fund what I'm referring to as the practical budget, approximately fifty-four million dollars of our budget is funded from what is referred to as beginning fund balance. That is monies that we will have available at the end of this year, June thirtieth, two thousand and six. Sales tax revenues are projected to be about thirty-four million dollars, making up nineteen percent of the total practical budget, the sources. Property taxes, including both the primary and the secondary property taxes, revenues total seven point five million dollars, making up four percent of the total revenues. User fees at thirty-one point eight million dollars make up eighteen percent of the revenues. What user fees include are the water revenues, the sewer system revenues, building permit fees, engineering fees, those types of charges make up that amount. Other operating revenues, which would include state shared revenues, and those sources make up about twenty million dollars, and then development impact fees comprise about thirteen point two million dollars of that total budget. I want to give a little history on the expenditure limitation. The City of Goodyear up through the two thousand and five budget year was on what was referred to as home rule or an alternative expenditure limitation that the voters approved every four years. And under that, when the city council adopted the budget, at the same time the city council also adopted the expenditure limitation for the city. A couple of years ago, in an election, the voters approved what is referred to as a permanent base adjustment to the expenditure limitation, and that increased the expenditure limitation for the City of Goodyear significantly, but puts us subject to the expenditure limitation calculations primarily at the end of the year, but they obviously need to be considered as we go through in the budget. The expenditure limitation is a hundred and sixty-six million dollars. That's part of the importance of why I brought out to you the practical budget compared to the legal budget, but there are a number of exceptions that are allowed within there, one of which is outside financing. In total, on the expenditure limitation for the budget as presented, there would be a deficiency of approximately sixty million dollars, and that deficiency we have included as a possible bond financing meeting one of the expenditures. That is why I mentioned earlier that as we go through the year, this is not anything the city council has to resolve or even opine on in this council meeting, but this is something we will be monitoring throughout the year. We will provide options if indeed we are running into difficulties with it. I do not believe we will, but I wanted you aware that that could happen. And if we do, there are options that could include financing, but could also include having developers provide infrastructure instead of providing the cash to fund that infrastructure. So there were options that we would provide should that exist. With that brief summary and pretty close to the twenty minutes I indicated, I would be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Larry. Do we have any comments from the public? I ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only, please.
Resolution oh-six one zero four-four, adopting the tentative estimates of the amounts required for the public expense for the City of Goodyear for the fiscal year two thousand six dash oh-seven, adopting a tentative budget, setting forth the receipts and the amounts estimated as collectible for the previous fiscal year, the amount proposed to be raised by direct property taxation for the various project purposes, giving notice of the time for hearing taxpayers for drafting a budget and fixing the tax levels.
Thank you. Could I have a motion?
Motion except resolution oh-six one zero four-four, as read by the clerk.
Motion from Councilmember Scott and a second one from Councilmember Sousa. It's open for discussion. Vice Mayor.
Yeah. What would happen if September, or sometime this fall, we were to approve, or we were to look at the need for adding, say fifteen to twenty new positions for the city staff? How does that impact the budget? Where would the money come from?
Okay. We have made provisions in this budget for the state's shared revenues, which would be, which we were conservative on our estimates, and those revenues would be available. We're supposed to know by about July first. I do not know today what that final number will be. The discussion that we had was that in September, we will present that number to the city council for consideration. That would be an option the city council could consider at that time, using that to fund whether it's additional positions or other projects as the city council saw fit.
Thank you.
Members over here, questions? Okay. Can I roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Cavaliere?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Mayor Cavanagh?
Aye.
Seven zero.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
What was our, when was our last CIP approved by the voters? What year was that? Do you have that on your calendar?
It was effective in two thousand. Was the election ninety-nine or two thousand? It was in that area. The quarter would be in it.
The permanent base?
No.
The CIP.
It's a hundred and thirty-seven million dollars. Was that about two thousand two? Ken?
Guy goes away for months, he comes back one night, and you're asking him?
He was center stage on that project.
It was, what the CIP was during the bond election, right? Didn't they see it during the bond election? That was while we were running for office. Same.
Two thousand four.
Valid, wasn't it?
Two oh four.
Two thousand three?
Was the same year as the charter.
Four, that's right. It was right after we got elected.
Two oh four.
You finished?
Of course. We'll look it up.
Okay. Does anyone on council have a question or inquiry of staff?
Just that.
Councilmember Antoniak?
I do have a question that would, and I don't know if it's been answered before, but, and maybe of interest to the others, as we were sitting here discussing nine eight A through E this evening and talking about densities and quality and economic development. I'd be curious to see what the density averages are and maybe socioeconomic data if that's available, or demographic data if that's available, surrounding places like Carolyn Commons, Scottsdale Fashion Square, Chandler Fashion Square. I think these are all things that are probably readily available, and we've probably seen them in things, but I think it's stuff that we have to keep in mind because as we go through this, we had quite a debate this evening on density, and I'll bet if you look at Carolyn Commons, the density within a certain radius is upwards of eight to ten in some cases. So it's just interesting. I know we're always comparing and contrasting ourselves against things, but I'd be kind of curious to see that, if it's something that's readily available.
Density has nothing to do with cloth?
One element. I said, and socioeconomic data, because I think it's all very important.
If you're talking about a fairly significant task.
Well, I think it's, I think it maybe if it's.
Will do three people agree with you, that it should be done. If not, it won't be done.
Any support? We're always. If it's readily available, somebody can point me in the right direction. I'll go to west core and happily get it. I mean, those are west core stats, so.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. I mean, reports, any action items tonight?
As a result of this evening, Mayor and members of the council, staff will research issues on tattoo massage, body piercing establishments, come back on July tenth with some options. The second one was, we'll follow up on some concerns expressed by Mr. Trigaball on phase two of the Saylor Ridge. We will get the answer to when the last bond election was held for CIP, and I wasn't sure, did, was there a interest on the other, just point you in the right direction.
If nobody else is interested in it.
Most of us are interested in it, so just point us, Mr. Grand.
Nobody else is interested?
We'll find you a data source.
Okay. All right. This meeting is adjourned.